Before we start, we have Wendy Gray, which is our warden.
That's right.
Donson. Do you all have an agenda? Anybody want to have anything to add?
I just have a municipal... Excuse me, admin building. I have just a quick update for council.
Which will be under...
For information.
For information, which is...
None.
Number nine. No, that's correspondence.
And information.
And information. Okay. Okay. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
Slow motion. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Undermined, carried. Any conflict of interest that anybody has to declare? If none, we'll go to item number three, which is a presentation. We have Municipal Alcohol Project Advisory Group. And Larry Phillips is here to give us a presentation. And the floor is yours.
Can you hear me good enough? Thank you. My name is Larry Phillips. I represent the alcohol foundations. And I'm here to talk to you about a proposed community action plan. This gentleman speak in a moment, introduce himself. But I just wanted to say that this is something that's been a little while in the making. And I've talked to this council before about a previous version of this. But I haven't talked to this council. And if you have any questions about any of the material, feel free to ask me throughout the presentation or the I, whichever you prefer.
Lauren Cushing, I'm the councillor for the municipality of Yarmouth. And I got involved with this group when I first became councillor back in the fall of 2016. And when Larry and his committee were going through, talking about the alcohol and tobacco part of it, at that time, I suggested that one of the cannabis... Two, because a lot of the bylaws and policies that will come out of this once the Feds and the provincial government have decided what they're going to do and how they want to do it. Then this will give us a kind of a groundwork for us to move on. So that's how I got involved.
So to continue with a little bit of background, to remind you a little bit more, there was a black report at your desk, Yarmouth County Municipal Alcohol Project. And that's where all of this work started. Part of that work is very... Early on, in terms of some of the ideas that were created, his regular contributions and some of the media that he did. And then there was this progressive and prosperous report, which you have as well. And that was basically, it's called Municipal Alcohol Policy Guide, essentially using the authority of the Municipal Government Act to increase public safety, improve health, and reduce costs around alcohol use. Back in May 2017, UNSM had a conference around cannabis legalization and provided some information around that for municipal units primarily. So coming back to our municipal alcohol group, I was bringing that information back and talking about how do we move forward in terms of the alcohol stuff. And that's when Laura, as he suggested, he asked a question that was really pivotal at the time. Why aren't we talking about legalization of cannabis as well as alcohol? And brought tobacco into the mix? And that is really what this progressive and innovative part of it was. That really changed things. And as I dug into it that summer, it really became apparent that this was something that was unique. So the three municipal units are among the partners that are involved with this plan. And that was a strength of the municipal alcohol work. And I think it will continue to be a strength of the, of this plan as well. Many communities face a diverse range of substance use problems. And our communities in Araldal are not much different. I'm going to pause on that and explain what I mean by not much in the world. The purpose of the plan is ultimately to reduce the harms from substance use and promote the health of our residents. The plan would essentially reinforce and extend existing provincial and federal drug regulations and apply them to the specific values and needs in our region. And I wanted to hopefully illustrate that with this example. So if you think about legalization of cannabis, how do you want to see smoking of cannabis in public places? Do you want to see it, and I just gave an example of a trail. So do you want to see it like you would see cigarettes currently now where you could be walking down the trail and it's, it's condoned in public, it's fine, and it wouldn't be that surprising? Or do you want to see it treated more like alcohol, where if you were to be walking along a trail, you essentially, I think you would be surprised to see that, there is no, not supposed to be the wind consumption of it. So those are the sorts of things that this group was grappling with and developing this plan. And that's to illustrate how you can take existing provincial and federal drug regulations and extend them locally. So council could, for example, have smoke-free outdoor spaces where the smoking of cannabis, tobacco, and cannabis could be extended to include parks and playgrounds, recreation facilities, trails, et cetera. So the substances included in the plan, alcohol, nicotine, and cannabis. We focus on those three substances because those are the three substances most commonly used or the ones that have the most harms. As you can see here, Nova Scotians have used more cannabis and nicotine than the Canadian average and slightly less alcohol than the Canadian average. I'm going to speak to how we use substances on the next slide, specifically using alcohol. But for now, I want to emphasize that we did not include illicit substances primarily because I do not see the use of illicit substances being greater than just the... So the previous slide showed how Nova Scotians drank alcohol slightly less than the Canadian average. But the issue isn't that Nova Scotians drink alcohol, it's how we drink alcohol. Nova Scotians drink more heavily on average than other Canadians. It seems to be said for cannabis use as well. So as you can see in this graphic, the southwest area has the second highest rate of heavy drinking in the province. And that's what I meant earlier when I said that the municipality of Araldal was not much different than other communities. Many communities in Nova Scotia are dealing with issues around alcohol. But the issues around alcohol might be, we might be dealing with more issues here in the southwest area of the province. In terms of harms, alcohol and tobacco research clearly shows that as access to a substance increases, use also increases. And then when use increases, that's when you see the harms increase as well. So I have listed a few harms. They're not specific to all of the three substances listed. Driving while impaired would be, would apply to alcohol, for example, and would also apply to cannabis. Nova Scotia actually has one of the higher rates of drug impaired driving, but it's not going to apply to nicotine. Substance use problems can be the result of many complex factors. So we wanted to ground some of the, some of this work and some of our actions in principles and some principles and values. And that's what you see here. I want to focus on one of those, flexibility. Because we designed this, this plan to be flexible. We designed it so that it would provide some structure and some guidance, but at the same time, we wanted it to be adaptable to new information. And this process aligns the development and implementation of the plan. So if you look at the top right-hand side of the circle engaging communities, this is something that health promoters are good at. It's something where we could be an asset to the municipal units. Conducting needs assessment, so that's a process of identifying strengths and gaps in the community. Readiness to address those needs is enhancing capacity. And then you develop refining of that. And these are the, this is the guts up here. These priority action areas are based on research and sound public health principles that have shown to reduce substance-related harms in a variety of contexts. So you can see each of these, these circles are interrelated. These are the prior, priority action areas. And then if you look in the actual document itself, you'll see specific actions that are listed. I'm not going to go over each of those actions or any of the actions simply due to time, but they're meant to illustrate what it is that this plan is working towards. What I will say is that the reason we chose these actions is because evidence shows that they are relatively cheap and easy and effective way to improve the health of our communities. There's just a few things I wanted to highlight through, through the process of this. As I mentioned before, when I was, last summer, when I was doing more research, talking to more people or my peers, talked to a national organization, the more I realized how progressive and innovative it really was. But I hope that idea of taking the three substances and bringing them together into one plan really is what makes this unique. I can't say it hasn't been done before, but it's, it's a, it's a different approach and it's actually quite difficult. But I think the end result is stronger. It's part of the... I also wanted to, we want this to be a plan about things that we're doing well. So we wanted to acknowledge that in the plan. And that's an NXP of some things that the municipal units in this area are doing well. The plan is designed to be flexible, as I mentioned earlier, and it's a draft. So this is very much a work in progress. What you see is, is a snapshot in time of that, but it will change. And next step, so this council has been instrumental in terms of the development of the municipal alcohol project and in transitioning that to this community action plan. What we're asking is your support in terms of working with the PAC to create and adopt a plan to reduce substance use related harms. And we're suggesting that this plan be part of that if it's helpful. We would like to have something brought back to council before the expected legalization of cannabis, which is this summer, summer of 2012. So I hope you see how you are in a unique position to have positive influence on the health of your communities here. Thanks and happy answering the questions.
Any questions?
We've got smoking cigarettes 12 feet from a, 12 feet from a door. Is that, do you know if that was set by provincial laws or provincial laws?
Yeah, I believe that's a provincial law.
So where we, could we come into that? If it's a provincial, provincial law, can we, I mean, let's say somebody's smoking a joint and they're 12 feet from a door. I mean, that to me doesn't sound very good.
Yeah. It's a good question because it's come up before. So that's the, this was trying to illustrate with the example that I used. So you could have smoke-free outdoor spaces. That would extend that if that's the decision that this council wanted to make and suggest the, the other municipal units as well.
So that would be to our PAC, which would be a good way to... Would we be bumped, so we're allowed then to bump provincial policy by extending it further?
Yeah.
It's allowed.
The word, the word bumped gives me some hesitation, but yeah, you can extend it.
I think you'll find that provincial level is the minimum distance. So because we're, we're able to make our own bylaws and policies within our municipality, I'm sure that it'd be a problem. So that's why we suggested we go to the PAC for more planning and activity amongst public participation and whatnot. And come up, as I mentioned, so suddenly just down the road here went to Crowa, Crowa, where it's often already been through the planning that they can't do it, but then such and such. Then go to the bylaw committee and develop some bylaws and policies from that.
Nope. Very few.
You can, just to clarify, you can, you can set more stringent requirements. You cannot set less stringent requirements. So your, if you wish as a council to up that situation, you can. We're not sure what the provincial legislation is on cannabis use at this time. So, you know, you might be satisfied with that. It might be more distance than cigarette. We, we're just, we're just, we're not aware of it at this time.
One of the main things that I need to say, one of the main things about this document is to give us a baseline to start with, number one. But Larry and I presented it to the town of Yarmouth the other night, and he and Larry presented it to the municipality earlier than that. As it stands right now, the municipality of Yarmouth and the town of Yarmouth are in agreement that they want to be on the same page so that bylaws and policies are all on the same. So that's why we're asking for the municipality of Araldal to do the same. So no matter where somebody went, the three municipalities were all the same.
Makes sense.
It's a lot of sense.
That's the purpose. Makes sense?
It's a lot of sense.
I'm just wondering, especially with cannabis use, how, how those laws have been enforced? I mean, has anybody defined for smoking cigarettes that have been 12 feet of a building? I don't know. Have they? And also when cannabis, cannabis comes in, who's going to enforce all these laws?
Yeah. It's a, it's a good question and that comes up as well. I can't speak for the cannabis just because, you know, not legal yet. But in terms of the, the smoking in the outdoors, smoke-free outdoor spaces, to me, the beauty of it really is that there's some to base, well, decisions I make on research and bridge water into smoke-free outdoor spaces and evaluate the results of it. And part of that process, we found out, is it's essentially self-imposed. So if somebody is smoking cigarettes, the first thing is you see the smoke-free side as a smoker, generally speaking, not always, but generally speaking, the person who's smoking that space. And then the other side of it is, then if I'm a smoker, it gives almost more admission that, hey, you know what? This is a smoke-free area, you can see the sign, and you might get it out. So that's where the enforcement piece sticks in, is that really, it's not something that I would suggest is a cost to municipal unit in terms of enforcement. It's one of those things that's self-enforced. That said, two things that I can't speak to is it's going to be happening all the time. You know it doesn't have our sort of smoking, not being allowed. And I can't speak for cannabis just because of the research area. But a good question.
And I think, and just to add a little bit more to it, the smoking within the three or four meters of the, of a building, again, we've been brought up in the, in the atmosphere of people smoking, and this is just something that we kind of hoped that would help certainly, right? But now with this cannabis as a drug, as alcohol, then definitely there'd be more enforcement. But at the end of the day, we're all going to realize that we'll be paying for it. Right back.
When it comes to cannabis and drugs and you can, from what we've heard, you can put that in food, like, you know, you could put that in ice cream, you could put that in, you know, in squares. Oh yeah, in whatever. But no, it's going to be available maybe in all kinds of foods. Who knows? And I mean, those regulations might be, might be enforced by the province, but certainly we have to be aware as a municipality, you know, do we, will they be selling this at local stores? You know, do we put laws of some of our bylaws? Hopefully, the province will be thinking, well, that stuff, I'm sure they will. But you know, where can we enforce that part? You've got, you've got children owning stores, you've got children all over the place and they're showing this stuff and what are you buying? Hopefully, the province will have some rules that we can follow or strengthen.
Yeah. Stay tuned. That's coming. The legalization of edibles will be expected to be about a year from now, a year from the summer.
Oh, that's...
Yeah. So part of that one for now.
Okay.
And I think you, I think you've seen that there's, there's been some problems already that popped up because it was July 1st. Now it's been moved.
That's right.
So they're spinning their tires, they're trying to figure what the heck is going on. So, and so hopefully it'll, it'll get ironed out. And when it comes to us, then we can adjust fairly easily.
Looking at the priority actions, it says regulate availability of substance. Is it not reg, regulate, how much more can you regulate it? What, what else can be done to regulate that?
So that one there, if you, if I recall, if we're to get into the details of the document, deals with that excess piece that I was speaking to earlier. So that would be along the lines of a number of stores that you have available, or do you want a store next to a school, for example, whether it's alcohol, cannabis, whatever. So we do have those laws in place now. And this would be an area that, that circle in particular would probably be an area that the local government wouldn't have a lot of direct influence over. The influence that you would probably have most over would be in our provincial government. But that's what, that's the sort of things that that would encompass. So having those discussions, because I think there's things that are done quite well here in terms of regulating substances. An example that comes to mind is you can't have drinking alcohol in the stands at the mayor's center. So that's, that's not, that's not assumed everywhere. Sometimes that's allowed. I think that's a good thing. So if you want, if you want to have this family-friendly atmosphere and you don't want to have alcohol in a situation like that, then what I would say is if that's regulating the availability of substances, then you have that as part of your policy or your plan and say, okay, we want to just keep this consistent so that the next time someone, if someone wants to come in the future and say, we want to do this, we've got this really great idea, it's going to make money, well, we've already talked about this and like it is.
Okay. That's where the regulate, yeah. I thought more like regulated through the stores and whatever, but it's already regulated in that sense. Anybody else?
Just from the perspective of AMA, this is a priority. This is more around the policy of, of consumption as a policy during, during work hours or in the workspace. They are looking at a policy for the province in anticipation of what's happening here. So that's not as much what you're talking about. It's more around what the municipalities intend to do around internal policies around substance use, you know, including cannabis, et cetera. So there's a lot of work moving forward at varying paces around, around some of these issues. And I think the cannabis legalization just, just raises an issue that's been there all along. Like the legalization of cannabis doesn't mean that people aren't using cannabis illegally. So, so there are some, it just really kind of brings up the issue and, and reemphasizes the importance of, of policy. What you're talking about is broader than that. So I just, I just wanted to let you know that the AMA has that on, and UNSM has, have that project on their, on their list.
There's no more questions. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for your presentation.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you very much.
Yes. It's a great, it's a great project and I'm sure, I can't speak for the, for council, but I'm sure that the support will be yours as well.
Appreciate the support and the guests already. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move along. The next item is your council priority progress report. It's there. Not a whole lot of movement since our last one, but... I don't know if there's anything more to add to that, if there's anything to report on that for me.
Well, on the progress report, we had initially said that I was going to add an item of information from the admin building. It's actually showing here as a priority. So I just want to give you an update on that. So as opposed to doing it later in the agenda, it's, it's actually here. So the, the tendering process has not been completed. We did receive, we, we received contact from our architects today indicating that they did receive cost estimates, or keeping in mind that this is projected cost estimates, the amount was higher than they anticipated. So they are going to take a look at what caused that to be the case. Obviously, with a lot of projects, what you, what you think will happen and what will happen are often two different things. So there is a process in place. And if we have to delay the tender, we will, because we want to make sure that the public is, is aware of what's happening and, and some of the work that needs to happen in order to make adjustments, if need be, to the project. Keeping in mind that the cost estimate is an estimate, they use it to, to see where they are around the market. And so they're, they're doing, I, they received that information late last week and they've been working diligently on trying to understand what that means. So some of the, some of the increases that we're seeing are due to the renewable energy decisions that we've made. So, so we just, we have a meeting with Wild Salt on, our architects on Thursday, and we'll have an opportunity to go through line by line what the cost estimates are. You know, we want to be in a position where we don't go to market on, with, with something that we're not comfortable with. We want to go to market with something we're very comfortable with. And so clearly, the going to tender in mid-March will be delayed about two weeks. I don't think that's a big deal, to be, to be honest, from, from my own personal opinion. I think it's more important to understand what we're going out with and what adjustments we need to make before, before we go out. Because once we go out, obviously, those prices are solid. And so I think caution is, is the right way to do this and to sit down with our consultants who are very, very, very interested in making this project work. They understand our, our budget limitations and so they're respecting it. And so, you know, with anything, we will anticipate certain adjustments. Maybe we go out to tender with some of those adjustments built in. And maybe we go out to tender saying, well, if the prices are okay, we do this, but if they're not, we don't. And so this is, these are the types of adjustments that we'll be working on. I just received the information today. So I'm not in a position to get into a lot of detail about that. But I think as council, as decision makers, you need to know that, that this is happening and we want to make sure that, that we move forward in a very positive way around this project. And I really, I'm quite confident that we'll get to the bottom of things and, and understand what adjustments that need to be made and, and any decisions that need to be made here, we'll make sure that you have the information in advance. Okay? So just, you know, it might be a little preliminary to talk about that because we're really still working the numbers and I don't actually have the numbers total. I just know that we're over. So, you know, which is not unusual in, in planning for these types of projects. So all's I know is that we, we will not go out to tender, obviously, without really looking at these numbers in a very hard way. So don't want to, I just want to reassure you that this is business as usual and these things happen and we will make adjustments before we go out. So if there's any concerns, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions I can, but understand that I haven't had the meeting with the architects as of yet. That will happen on Thursday.
My, my question would be that, okay, we've set a budget, but so let's say, let's say that we, we're saying that we're going to, we're going to stay within 2.8, okay? Now, if it's the renewable energy that's going to, like here, your solar panels, whatever, it's going to bring us over. We know that we can, is, do they have to stay within budget knowing that, that portion of it is going to be paid for either by gas tax or by, or by a grant or whatever else?
Right.
You know, like, so would we still be going ahead if we know that now rather than 2.8 is going to cost us 3.1 or 3.2? But out of that 3.2, the grants and whatever is going to bring us back down to the 3.8? Is that something that, that they're considering or is that something that they have to stay within with the budget that they gave them?
We're both considering that. So, so they're aware of what items are eligible for gas tax and what, what items are eligible for the potential FCM funding that could be coming in. I think based on the numbers, what they're saying is while, while the FCM grant would have been nice, now it seems like it's a little bit more necessary than nice in order to maintain the budget. But, but, you know, that, that means, that could mean a variety of things. It could mean that we, we reset around the mechanical and electrical components that we have initially thought that we could afford. You know, some of those things just have to be rethought. And then there might be decisions that council will have to make and say, look, you know, we said the budget would be X, Y. We're going to spend a little bit more on renewable energy and this is why, and ask the public to, to understand that... and this is why, and and ask the public to to understand the logic of your decision, right? So we're never gonna be in a situation where we proceed being so far out of whack on the budget that we would that we would, you know, throw caution to the wind. Caution is our 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 starting point. And so, you know, if we have to take a look at alternate energy sources, alternate mechanical and electrical components that need to be changed, if it needs to be smaller, if the storage needs to be smaller, if the landscaping has to be different, there's a variety of things that we.
Of ways that we can.
Yeah, we will look at everything, actually, you know, like there, I know there was a lot of concern in the public around the amount of roofs that, you know, go up and down, and I I, to the best of my knowledge, I don't believe that's the reason why this is happening, but I think it's it's more mechanical and electrical and the landscaping component of the work, which which can be adjusted.
Yes.
So so just to to let you know that we are, we are very, very focused on making this thing work in a way that, from a budgetary perspective, is understandable.
And I think it's very important that the that the public is aware, if we do go over budget initially, that they're aware of where that money's gonna come from, and so so that, no, we said we were gonna spend this much out of our funds, but the rest is coming out of somewhere else that doesn't affect the.
Right. I totally agree with that, and I think that's that's why I'm raising it now. Like, the information is literally two hours old. So I think it's important for council to know, and I think it's important for the public to know, when we get that information, that we share it in a very open way.
For sure.
But understanding that, you know, cost estimates are estimates, and they're based on a certain scenario, scenarios can be changed before they go to tender, and that's our intent. We intend on taking a look at it and saying, okay, well, you know, these things happen, and and, you know, it's not a problem, it's a situation. And so we just, we just take a take a look at it again and and make adjustments, right? So, you know, our intent is to move forward with the project, but we're not gonna move forward with the project if you don't have the budget for it. So there's always adjustments to be made.
Anybody else?
A couple of, couple of things. That information, would that go to the building committee to defend those numbers? Also, I'm sure it usually comes to you first, you know, the, you're to call that.
Oh, yeah.
But that would go to be shared with the building committee, then come to council?
Yes, yes.
Would you be the procedure?
Yeah, I mean, I don't like, yes, I think that is the proper procedure. I think the first, the first step is to have some of our staff meet with them and and for them to explain the situation and try to help them come to a solution that makes sense. Once we make those adjustments, that revised information will go to the building committee, and then the building committee would talk about what things are worth investing in and what things may not be worth investing in. You know, the renewable energy thing might cost us more money, but at the end of the day, when you when you think about the savings over the lifetime of the building, it might make sense to actually invest in that situation, using gas tax, and then save the taxpayer money on the operating costs of the building. So again, these things are are really in flux right now. So I'm just, I'm sharing the information as quickly as I had it, so that you're aware, and so that the public is aware, that that this is something that we will be working on, and we'll come back to both the building committee and eventually council around what the solution or the potential mitigation or adjustments might be on the project.
Question two is, have you looked at saying, all right, let's do the front of the lawn, let's eat the back of the lawn, for maybe another year, like, maybe to save on our, you know, but I know you should do everything at once, but is there stuff that can hold out for a couple of years, a year, or not really?
Again, it's premature to tell you exactly where we're at with that, but I hear what you're saying. Like, and so all of that will be on the table. Like, if landscaping's gonna be too expensive, then we do less landscaping. Like, if if, you know, like, we 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 make adjustments based on the situation, and and we revisit some of our initial plans around some of the design, and and maybe there are things that we can do slightly differently that would be less expensive, you know? You know, everything adds up, and at the same time, adjustments bring it back, right? So again, the the good news is 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 we have not gone to tender. We have, we have, we're in the, we're in the midst of planning, and as anybody who is aware with renovations and and new construction, things happen. And I think the public knows that, and I think you know that, and we just have to make adjustments and make sure that that the budget's respected as best as possible. And and if council decides to to make a further investment with their gas tax money or with other funds, then 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 I think it's something that, you know, we want to make sure that we can justify to the public where the money's coming from and why. So.
Perfect.
Yeah. So we'll do, we'll do, it's premature to know exactly where, but after Thursday, I'll be in a better position. I'll be writing a report to both you guys, you guys, council, and the and the building committee as well.
Just wondering if you would have a timeframe as to when the tenders may be called? Like, people keep asking me, when do they think they want to build, or when are they gonna start, or?
It's about a month from now.
Okay.
End of March is what the architects are saying. I'm a little skeptical that it might not be that quick based on the type of adjustments that need need adjusting. Really depends on how long they need in order to make those adjustments go out to tender. But they feel confident, and and I know our architects have been, like, when they have an issue, they'll work the other night on it. So we know that they're committed to the project like we are, so it's good news.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, thank you. For the, for the update?
There's nothing else to update on the the progression of the other priorities. The Wedgeport wastewater project is essentially complete, there might be two or three more.
Yeah. Because that's the only one that we see that kind of moved.
Yeah, both alternative and affordable housing and improved internet service are somewhat dependent on third parties to move in an efficient way.
Okay. We'll move on to financial report. And that would be our C A O.
Well, look at that. So this is at the end of January 2018. We are projecting an unrestricted surplus of 177,201 at this time. That will be reduced before the end of the year, based on a couple of investments. One in particular would be the the investment in the Zamboni for the Mariner Center is not recorded in these financials at this time. And other Mariner Center expenses that we have not yet approved at council, we'll be bringing that to you as soon as possible. We have an outstanding bill, and we also have an outstanding budget for the new year that we need to discuss. So that's not ready for you just yet. Some of the highlights, you've heard some of these a million times, but there is a positive, positive numbers in the transfer tax, along with return on on investment income. The, in terms of expenses, we've seen some major savings in administration costs, as well as currently employer benefits and and salary costs associated with that are showing a considerable positive variance. In general, government services is showing a variance positively of $46,000, but that's a variety of things. Other other variances of note would be the cost to run the airport. We had anticipated considerable investment in economic development and other costs related to special projects for the airport. That is not, is either not going to happen this year or is yet to occur. So we're seeing a savings there of about 11,000 in January. That will close off a little bit, but it will still be a surplus at the end of the year. We're seeing some savings in dangerous and unsightly that's due to timing. We're gonna have some costs associated with some cleanups, which will come into play both this year and next year. We have some savings in economic development and parks, community development, variety of things will equal 12,000 for the year for economic development. Recreation is showing some positive variances of about $14,000. That will, again, close off a little bit before the end of the year to some projects that haven't been completed. But there's also a savings in the Tuscan courthouse and museum, which will result in a savings for the year. They had anticipated capital that they did not spend and will not fully spend this year. That's the major reason for the variance. One of the other variances here that we're showing as an expense that we're asking council for approval is in relation to the industrial commission transfers for Dominion Textiles, which is on the agenda. But some of those costs, because we received invoices, have already been recorded, but the actual payment has not been approved. So that will be for you to approve later. So the surplus of 177 is 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 solid for the end of January, we have another two months. We expect that number to come down slightly before the end of the year. There are some other things that have not been recorded that we're expecting to receive, which will, again, increase that number. But I think it's, we will be ending up with a surplus at the end of the year for certain, and we'll have to make a decision, decision where that ends up, whether it goes to to operating or capital reserves at that time. That's the summary of the report, unless there are any questions or concerns, I would ask that it be accepted.
Questions?
I don't believe, after our meeting last night, the industrial commission, the medical centers, medical centers, what we have there this year would be, will be what we'll be spending.
Correct.
Right. Anything that may happen, which we're not sure, a lot of things on the fly, nothing, you know, major to discuss, but some some things are are moving, and that would be something that you'd have to look in the budget.
That's correct.
Depending on what comes up.
That's correct. Yeah. So we've received a budget that was approved yesterday from the industrial commission. There was some uncertainty presented in that budget, just so that everybody's aware. And whatever the uncertainty is, will not impact the current year, it will impact future years. Yeah. So what you see there should be, you shouldn't get any big surprises. Yeah.
Any other questions? C nine, we need a motion to step.
So move forward.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. On favor?
Aye.
Contemplated, carried. Next one is the strategic priority topics. Now, all right, did you want those reversed? Did you say you you would have liked to discuss the airport management services first?
No.
Doesn't matter?
The priorities first, and then airport after.
Okay.
So in your, in your agenda, I know there was a last minute change in terms of switching the order, six A should be council priority agreement scores. All right, that's what you're seeing, you're seeing the right thing. If you're not seeing that, press refresh.
Yes.
And thank you, Chris. So what you see is a spreadsheet showing the rankings of all of the priorities that were presented to you at a special meeting earlier last week or late last week. So what we did was, we drew a line, it's a bit of a random line, but we drew a line at all projects that scored five or better, 10 being the best score, which the municipal building construction scored as as 10. So the, all the other projects that are listed here, that are above the number of five, are projects that we we should be thinking about for the next 12 months. I mean, obviously, some of this will be adjusted over time. But just for the purposes of of transparency, some of the things that are listed here include municipal building construction, alternate and affordable housing, which was a priority of last year, dangerous and unsightly premises cleanup, East Pabniko industrial water system capital upgrades, improved internet service, which is a regional project, rails to trails improvements, which could be regional, but I suspect local, West Pabniko wastewater improvements, which I believe is in reference to our de-watering project, which is on the agenda for approval, Wedgeport wastewater improvements, which is another phase of what we've done, because the the phase that is completed has essentially been completed, sidewalk construction, Department of Transportation issues, which is basically to address some of our road issues globally to the department, and then Tuscan wastewater improvements capped off the list of anything over five. The things below that, doesn't mean they're less important, it just means that they received another ranking that's a slightly lower. Eelbrook Fire Hall assisting in the project management and funding, I think that ranked a little lower, not because we didn't think it was important, but because we know it's not ready. And so Argyle Court House steeple repair, outdoor play project, A T, act of transportation education and awareness, green spaces, hipson bridge improvements, improved archives, research room, strategic plan for A R C, connecting to nature, accessibility audit on recreational facilities, which I will note that the the region of recreation, the recreation region that's represented regionally, not just Argyle, did successfully receive funding for this. So subsequent to our conversation, they actually, there was confirmed funding for this, so that will likely occur, just because somebody else, like, i.e. the province, felt it was important to do that at a regional level. So that will probably happen. New archives promotional material and municipal strategic plan refresh, cap out the lower priorities, which doesn't, it's, again, this is up for discussion. And then the last two, which received negatives, we'll have to try to clarify a couple of things here, is the Yarmouth Airport funding and the East Kemfield Ball Field renewal. So that's the summary, and I think you would have received an email from me asking for clarity around some of these.
Yep.
And just just to clarify exactly, particularly a couple of things, and I think I I raised both of them, is the Yarmouth Airport funding, which we can talk about, we can talk about it on the topic that is following, and the municipal strategic plan refresh. So my understanding is that, is that the municipality, the municipal strategic plan refresh came lower on the schedule, and it might have been because it wasn't something that you wished to contribute financially, to have somebody come in and do it for us. But the question remains whether or not you want us to do that type of work in the next 12 months internally. So that's a question that is a little outstanding. And the airport funding, we can talk about in the next topic, because we specifically talk about the services that I'm currently providing to the airport, and I just want clarity around what the will of council is around the future of that service or or the asset itself. So that's a summary, I don't know if it's a summary, of the projects and how they came out. And I just, unless there were questions or comments, or, we we will be coming back to these for a deeper discussion, but we're here, we have the priorities in front of you, and if there's any anything that council wishes to add to it at this time.
Maybe our chair should be asking this, but we did receive an email from me today requesting a little clarity on some of these topics. Should we, we go through the concerns you have one by one, or, you know, do you want to talk about this document as a whole first? I'm talking to the C A O here, would you like to discuss the document as a whole or or address your concerns?
We can, we can start with the concerns, if you wish, councillor. I mean, I I did, I, you know, my, I mean, to be frank, I mean, being the interim manager of the airport and then seeing Yarmouth Airport funding in a negative column, made me think that maybe I was working for the wrong organization. And so I didn't understand exactly what what was meant by that and what the concern was specifically, because, you know, there's obviously challenges that we have with the airport, and sometimes that frustration can come out sideways, for lack of a better term. But the question becomes, the the question remains, if if this is something that you wish your C A O not to spend as much time on, that's something I should probably get that clarity on. And the other thing is, like, obviously, administrators love to talk about direction, and so the the strategic plan is one that that was low on the list, and I thought, well, And I thought, well, does it mean that council doesn't want us to spend money on it? Or does it mean that council doesn't want us to spend money and time on it? I just wanted that clarity.
I'm gonna take my best crack at it. I can't speak for everyone, but I can see your concern. You, you're the interim manager for the airport right at the moment, and you just basically got told from a bunch of little dots that it's not council's priority. I mulled it over after you reading your email, and I, I got to thinking, I don't feel that it's not a priority for me. However, I think after reading your email, if I could go back and realize how you took that, I would change how I voted, in the sense that we gave you clear direction, or at least I feel like we gave you clear direction, that we want Argyle's contribution to be minimized, and we want the airport to be a functioning airport, or at least this is how I feel. I obviously can't speak for all nine of us here, but we want the airport to be operational for basically the, the few essential services that we do need in our area. But to the bare bones, costing us as little as possible, because quite frankly, the five years that I've been here, I, I've, I've just been through a roller coaster with that airport, and I don't foresee, you know, any benefits coming out of it anytime soon compared to the costs that we've been injecting into it or, or the, the capital that we've been injecting into it. So as far as a priority, I don't feel like it should be Argyle's priority to be very invested in that airport, but at the same time, it's a priority to get it to a more palatable amount, you know, cost-wise. That, that's, that's how I look at it. So at least that's how I feel. If, if I could go back now, understanding how you looked at our votes, I would change it, given the fact that you do, you are aware of what direction we kind of want to head in. So for me, it is a priority. It's a priority to get it to something that I can go back to my taxpayers and say, "We're spending this much, we're getting this, makes sense." Right now, I don't feel like it's there. That's my two cents.
I'll, I'll start off on the strategic plan refresh. I guess myself, the way I voted, if you want to speak for myself, was the money part. I felt that the direction was we were gonna staff some of it.
Great.
That, that's totally how I voted. I'll be very honest with you. I, I feel it's important. I had enjoyed going to the, to the old Argyle. The sessions, it was very good, very well organized. We had a person that was leading the thing. But I think, I have your experience and staff, that we can go there and come up with the same thing to cost us less money. But yes, I feel we need a, a, a plan refresh, where that costs us a bunch of money. That's my, that's number one. Number two, into a little deeper, into what Counselor LeBlanc was saying. The airport, what I voted, I wouldn't change my mind two for two cents, what I, what I have voted. Because number one, you're going too much now. We gave you direction. This is not a bad word for you, Ala. You're, you're very good at what you do, and when you go, you're going headfirst. Mr. Man, there's no question, when you go there, you shake things off, you make things move. And I'll be very honest as I can be here. I'm so scared the way you go into things that we're gonna lose you here. Lose you, that you'll be too far, and I'm being honest here, too far into that, because you, you, you're such a person to make things a go. That you're gonna work so hard on that. We've got the administration building, we've got on the go here. I feel that's gonna fall behind, because it takes you to look at that stuff and to really push wherever you're going, with, with the, with the building committee, of course. So I find that, no, do I want, do, do we want you there till the end of March? Of course, we said we would. But seven months after that is too, too long. Too, too long. That's again my opinion. I feel we, we can, we need you here. We really need you here. We have got Chris, we've got your staff, but without Ala there, it's not the same. And I, and I tell you what, you're, you're a driver. When you start going for, but we need Ala here. That's my opinion. To meet a lot of these projects we've got to go, to move forward, we need you here. Would I say an extra three months, that would be the most after March? Then, then, again, my opinion, that I'd rather see you go. Going back on Counselor LeBlanc, also the money part of the airport, we haven't gone down enough. This year, we're looking at two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars according to the budget. If we go by the budget of what, if we, the budget is, or it's at, we'll be at two sixty-four. Next year, through the email we got from you, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Twenty-nine percent of that is two hundred and twenty-three thousand, is what it works out. Way too much, way, way too much. Counselor LeBlanc couldn't have said any better. I've seen four managers there in the ten years, going on ten years I'm here, and we're in the same frigging place we've been for the last ten years. I see no advancement there. I feel that airport, we, we need Medivac there, Flight Light, Light Flight, whatever it's called, we need that. We need the airport for some of the private businesses, for the fisheries. But I think that's where my limit goes. Spending a whole bunch of money into fixing the runways. And I mean, we still have to have a runway for East Baysland and that. But again, I think our emphasis has to go on our own municipality a little more, and we need some cutback on that, on that money we're spending. And I feel a hundred and fifty thousand, and way more than I should be saying, that I feel it. For next year, a hundred and fifty would be plenty, and really down to a hundred thousand after that. Because again, we're going nowhere. I hear a lot of, of my people from my district saying, "Where are we putting the money?" People are asking for lights on sidewalks, asking for sidewalks, for places to put landings for boats, and on and on and on and on. Where, where are we getting the money from, except for Medivac and a few other things? That's my position.
Okay.
Thank you.
If I may, I, I have a concern as well with, with the amount of time. And not because, not because I think we're losing here at this point. Because I think, I think you're, you're, you're probably, I don't think the municipality is suffering at this time. Because I think, I think, what you said, he's, Ala will put a hundred percent. And I think, I don't believe that he's neglected the, the duties of our municipality. My biggest concern is, how long can you do that without burning out? And if you burn out, then we're gonna suffer, right? That, that would be my concern, that, that in the long term, that, that if you, if you do overextend yourself, that all of a sudden, you can't do any of the jobs properly. As far as spending the, the money that we're spending there, we've only made these changes and agreed with these changes, what, three months ago? I don't think that you can expect to have big, big changes in that amount of time. I think it takes time to go to where we want to go. We have to realize too, that we have, we have, we're still within, we're still in our contract here. We still have a year in our contract. And we've, we've, we're, we're committed to giving this much money. And I think we're still within that contract. And I, I don't believe that we can, that we can not give what we have to give, what we, what we agreed and signed. I think this year, we're kind of stuck there. I think we're gonna see some improvements. I, we're, we're seeing it, we're seeing it in, in, in small, in small pieces. And it takes time to go, when, when, when you're, when you're looking at, at that type of, of organization and that type of business that we have, you can't make changes that all of a sudden, just, just overnight it changes. I think it takes time, and it takes work. If, if Ala cannot do the interim, somebody has to do the management of this. And I think we have to know exactly where our airport is before we hire someone. And before we hire someone, I think we have to have someone there. And I think Ala is probably the person to, to, to be there, because he's showing, we're starting to see some, some differences. It would be, I, I think it would be premature to hire a, a manager at this point. I, I do believe, because we have to know exactly. One, we, we may find that we don't need a full-time manager. And we don't want to advertise that as a full-time manager now, not knowing whether or not we're gonna need one or not. So that's my concern, just that, make sure that you don't burn yourself out with, not just the airport, because there's, like, like, like Counselor Saret said, we've got other things that you're involved with, you're not just involved with the airport. Counselor LeBlanc?
Seems like I'm gonna, I'm always playing devil's advocate. I agree with, with what Counselor Saret's saying. If, if I could, you know, put emphasis on the cost savings, that we, we need to bring this down. And we'll likely, if I, you know, if I get any sense from this table, when that contract is up, future negotiations will hopefully look differently. But in the time being, the one thing I, I, I guess we'd have to hash out here today that I sort of disagree with, with Counselor Saret, is that, I, I sort of agree, we, we don't want our CAO not to be here. However, I do feel he's the best man for the job, and I do feel he should go in there, clean up what we call a mess, start thinking about an exit strategy for, for hiring someone. Once that mess is cleaned up, we have that airport, you know, down, not downsized, but structured how we should. But I don't feel like we're, we're lacking in the time being, not to throw a feather in his cap, but we do have a deputy clerk here who does an excellent job, sort of a, a second in command that, yeah, I'm sure you guys all call him as much as I do. I don't feel like we're lacking here at the moment. We do have a lot of projects on the go, and I feel like we have a good team here. I think we should clean it up, you know, finish the job and get out of there. You know, it's kind of like you're saying, hiring someone right now would be a little too premature. I think you should finish the job that you started. I have no problems with that. It's just, as Counselor Saret said, I don't think you should drag on, right? That there's, there's a time limit that, you know, we should be thinking about.
Interesting to hear other, other councillors' views and comments on this. Okay, councillor Anshma.
When it comes to the municipal strategic plan refresh, I think CA news, and we seem to be taking on you today, so I might as well take on you too.
As long as we don't go, as long as you don't have to go in camera and talk about...
Basically, you said, you said to us that it could be done in staff, so...
Yes.
You know, everybody went digging, cost saving, so that's why we rated it very low.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
It's like that, right?
Great.
So you, you set us up for that one.
I did.
And as far as the airport, I think, you know, I'm just gonna talk about, you know, the, the little priority voting by council. I think that's kind of a, you know, sour taste in our mouth that we've had for a while, including myself. And that's why it ended up down there, so.
Okay. Yeah.
I agree with the, with the strategic plan. I think we really need a new strategic plan. Ours has kind of come to the end of life, but as, as we said, we just kind of thought, I thought it would be good if we didn't have to spend the extra money on it, so that's why I rated it a little lower.
No problem.
The airport, I guess my concern for the airport is, and, and I think you're doing a phenomenal job there. And, and I know you're, and as Counselor Saret said, I know you're putting a hundred and twenty percent in that, because you have it as a priority as well. You want that thing cleaned up as well. But my concern, as I read emails and things, is, so we agreed for three months. And I agree, three months isn't a lot of time, but yet in that time, there hasn't really even been the thought yet of looking for a new manager, right? That worries me. Like, how, if we don't put those feelers out, how long are they going to keep you? Because I'm sure they want to keep you, right? So those are my concerns when it comes to the airport. I, I think you're doing a great job, and I think that you, we've seen progress. But how long do we let that go? And because you're doing, when somebody does a great job, you don't want to let them go.
Right.
Right? So that's my concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, just, I guess going over what they said, that's the only, the strategic plan. And that by all means, I think we need a new one. And that, plus, I was hoping that it could be done in-house instead of going out. That's the only reason why I voted to put it there. At the same time, I know you have a busy staff here, they can only do so much. But I feel as though I'd be willing to wait for it a couple of extra months or whatever it would take for them to do it in-house. The airport, I honestly don't know what to say about the airport. What you, how, how long do you feel is though you would like to be there to clean up what you started, or?
It's like anything else, it's a process. And so I think with anything, processes take longer than, than anybody anticipates. You know, when I first started here in two thousand and six, there were things that, that I wanted to change, and it's a process, right? And you either have, you either have, you have a variety of things at your, at your disposal. You have talent, you have time, and you have your own, and then you have, you have talent, talent, time and staff. I think that the, that the airport requires a short-term and a longer-term person. I'm not the long-term person. I'd like to be in a position where I can set certain things straight and then be able to assist a person after I would exit. So what I'm hearing today is that it's very important that the board understands that this is a temporary position and that there's an exit strategy involved. The reason why I would have hesitated with that is part of the, part of the strategy of reducing costs includes me going in there. So it's, it's a bit of a catch-22, you know, like, they're getting a manager for a fraction of the cost that a manager would otherwise go in and do, because we recognize that there's a partnership involved and that we're, we're putting our best foot forward around that, around that service. So for instance, you know, what you'll see in, in, in the recommendation is that, is that the, the fee would be three thousand dollars a month. I mean, that's, that's probably half the amount that management services and industrial commission receive from a third party, from, from another staff person. So the intent is to, to try to make it work in the best way possible, knowing that whatever we charge, we have to pay twenty-nine percent of that, because we're a twenty-nine percent owner of the airport. So we're trying to find a, a number. The number I recommended may or may not be the right number. And it might be of Argyle's interest to increase that number to ensure the exit strategy works. But sometimes when you get a discount, you like to keep that discount. That's entirely up to council. But, you know, from, from my perspective, I think that another, another, another three, three months is insufficient. I think another six months might work to get it set up. I figured if I thought it was six, it probably is seven, because my time management might not have included things. So I felt like seven months was reasonable in terms of an exit strategy. But knowing that, knowing that the, the situation around the airport will involve some longer-term things that I will not actually do, that I'll have to pass that on to somebody else. So some of the things for, for those that are here and for those that are watching, that, you know, we talk about the airport needing adjustments or the setting things straight or, or, or that it's, you know, the, the issue is, is that the airport has run larger. It has run as if it was running passenger service every day. So that certification changed in August of last year. So some of the adjustments occurred before me coming in, but most of them occurred after, around making decisions around what we do, how we operate the airport differently. So since I've gotten there, obviously, we, we, we had a, a manager resign, and we had another person that was not renewed, who was a policy writer, so there's two less people there than there was before. And what we're trying to do is adjust the situation where, where the operation is tightened. We have done a little bit, no, well, I shouldn't say a little bit, we've done quite a bit. But there's still a lot to be done to try to adjust this thing smaller. The airport has the, has three hangars and has a, has an excess building outside of its terminal building and its, its CSV building, which is storage for mechanical. So there's some things that we'll have to look at in terms of how we actually deliver plowing services and maintenance services in the future. There's an argument to say that there's at least one excess building on the location, and there's an argument to say that there is quite a bit of excess land on the location, which could be sold to the benefit of the owners. So there's that kind of work that needs to be done, that will engage the CAOs in either instance. So I just, I want to be clear that some of the work that we're doing now is, is, and that I'm doing now, is supported by a good staff at the airport. So I'm not alone. People say, "How do you do both?" I don't, actually. I get supported in both places quite well. So in terms of your concern for time, it's, it's flattering that you're concerned about, about... that you're concerned about, about my time and where it's spent. I, I really do appreciate that and I want to say that publicly. I thank you for the support because I see it as, I hear that as support. Um, I think that the, that, that whoever comes in after me could be supported by me i- in terms of getting further changes made. So that's a long answer to your very, very short question.
That's all right. That, but no, I, I feel as though, and you said some bit about with the three thousand dollars a month now and that your fee, and that I feel as though, um, they're not only getting an interim manager for that, they're also getting, uh, a use of an engineer, as I know Hans has done some work in there, uh, as well. And, uh, I believe Alex has done some work.
He has.
You know, so I feel as though they're getting a very, very good deal, see other two partners. And, um, you know, it's, I feel as though this municipality has to be compensated for it, you know?
Thank you.
And again, getting back to we, I personally, I can't speak for the rest, love you being there. I know you were there with all your heart, like you were here with all your heart. But at the same time, uh, you can only do so much sometimes. We, we sure don't want you to end up sick and us lose you here. Not only do they lose an interim manager, we lose a C A O.
Well, I know who I work for and my passion for the airport is only because I feel like we can make a difference there to reduce the investment of the partners in the airport and to adjust it in the way that it makes sense. So me being at the airport is in fact, in a lot of ways, me working for you. And I just, I want to make sure that everybody understands that, that, that obviously there's a point where that becomes a little cumbersome and I get it, right? There's a point where that has to take a transition. This is not a permanent position. I totally agree with you. And, um, and so, so, so my, my, my objective is to try to adjust things in a way so that we're all as partners in a better position to make a better decision about the future of the airport. Yeah.
Just the end result, we, we, we benefit from the end result of whatever you, you come up with. I mean, we're part of order and that, we get point, you understand, so.
What, what, sorry, what he had stated and I'd be a hundred percent, a hundred and ten percent behind it. If they go with a new manager, whether it be part-time, full-time, I hope you were there, you know, as, on some type of basis and that watching over our interests as a municipality.
I was certainly there prior to me being manager.
Yes.
Counselor Albright.
Yes, and I just want to add in, you know, we talked about our contract, we're renewed in a year or so. I think our best shot of really making a very informed decision the next round is having, having our C A O involved as much as he is, as much as we may not, well, we're not crazy about the idea, at least I feel confident that if you do spend more time there, um, things will get ironed out, things will get, we'll get much more information so that when we make decisions next time, when it comes time to renew contract, we'll feel, uh, I think we'll feel a little more confident in what we're, what we decide on.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to add on to something that the deputy warden said, you know, we all gained while our C A O was there. Uh, the three units gained, but we gained also. But I'd like to add on, if there's a one, maybe one point I think that is missing there, that if he gets sick, then we lose and the others do.
Exactly. You want to, uh?
Understand. Understood.
Okay, yes.
One hundred percent.
Yes.
Um, I'm agreeing pretty well with the last conversations we're having. Um, I, I always had hope in this airport because I think it's a, it's an asset that we have, um, but we can't spend too much time on it, so within the next year, I think we're gonna manage to, uh, get this very seriously. And if there's nothing that comes out of it, well, that's, that's when we exit from, from it, so. I'm, I'm supporting you, a hundred percent. So, um, hopefully something good will come out of it. I'm sure it will. So, um, thank you for everything you do.
Uh, just, just to mention on the contract, the contract is in its last year, starting effective April first.
Yes.
And the contract states very clearly that it was a four-year agreement and that the minimum amount of funding that would be asked of, of the three owners is seven hundred and seventy thousand. We've not asked for the minimum amount until this coming year. So, so the minimum amount will be sought and there's two things that council should think about. One is, one is the, uh, the service, the, the management fee that will be charged by this municipality to the airport will be revenue for the municipality of Argyle, uh, not for Alain use, uh, municipality of Argyle. And then the, the, uh, the second component is the, is the tax reduction. So because we have that tax agreement, there's about thirty thousand dollars that comes off that number. So the, the actual amount is about a hundred and ninety-five, not including the management fee. So if the management fee is whatever it is, we'll reduce your investment thusly. So, so, uh, right now, I think I estimated a hundred and seventy-four net after the management fee. But that, that assumes a low management fee number that I had presented for your, for your discussion, which is the next topic, which we seem to be talking about already. So I just want to clarify the, the, the contract and what the contract says.
Right.
So there's no motion for the priorities, I don't believe. I think, I think what I heard was the airport, we, is gonna be talked about soon after, but what I heard from the municipal strategy is do it, but don't spend money, do it internally, which we're more than happy to do.
I agree.
And staff is excited to do it, like the deputy clerk can't wait. He can't wait. Look at him. Look at him, he can't wait. He just can't wait. You know, we talk about it at core meetings of our internal staff and, and we all feel like we can do it on our own with council.
One handed.
So? That's it for that, I don't? Now we move to airport management services.
Right. So I think we discussed this.
We.
So, so, um, uh, just for your information, so what I'm recommending was on the low end, it's three thousand per month for management services excluding H S T. We'll have to charge H S T on this. Uh, which is fine because the airport recovers that one hundred percent. And, um, so whatever we do, just a reminder to council that, first of all, it's an estimate of my time and my time only, does not incorporate Alex or Hans's time on the project. So even by saying that is, it, we're already coming, coming in low. Um, the other examples that we have out there in terms of management services, uh, we have a sixty thousand dollar a year management service charged by the municipality of District Yarmouth for the operation of the industrial commission. But that also includes, uh, bookkeeping assistance. Um, the services that we provide would not include, uh, bookkeeping assistance. There is a, a local bookkeeper, but I would do overview and oversight of that. Um, so that's really the only other example we have across the region. This would be three thousand times twelve is thirty-six a year, so that's considerably lower than the sixty. And I would just ask council to discuss and, and make a decision so we can go back to the board. The board ultimately approves whether it's acceptable to them and if it's not acceptable to them, you, you get your wish, you get me at a hundred percent.
There you go.
So.
I, I cannot support, uh, seven months. That's the only thing in that, in, in, in that, uh, and again, this is my opinion. Uh, the seven months, that's after, which would start on the first. I don't feel that the seven months, if we, if we didn't have seven months, left it all blank, I could vote, I would vote. So what am I saying? I'm saying let's go on a monthly and, uh, when you feel you can move on. In my personal way, I'm saying, ah, forget if it takes seven months, let them go. But I'd rather not have seven months if you could get out of there. But I don't know what the others, maybe the other one stick to that, but I don't feel good about that seven months for sure.
The, the one thing, if we, if we were to, let's say, approve seven months, okay? And in five months, we're where we want to be, it doesn't mean that you have to stay seven months, right?
The, the agreement can be monthly. The agreement can be month to month. We just need to give the board some understanding of when they should be thinking about an exit strategy.
That's right.
So, um, if, if council agrees that it should not be seven months, if that's okay, what I'm suggesting is a monthly fee, however, I'm not necessarily, uh, uh, recommending you have to land on the amount of months at this time. What I would like to see is an understanding of what the monthly fee might be.
Right.
And, and then we would present that to the board and have them, uh, consider that.
Yes.
Just to say, if you don't mind, I guess, I guess I, I, from what you said, I, I guess, wow, you have to go to the board and they had, the board has to know, like, are you there in two months and the four days are not? No, I wouldn't want that if I was a month manager. That's for sure. Yeah, maybe I should rethink what I just said there. Yeah, they need some, some. I'll, I'll take that. What I said there, no, I, I can understand what you mean.
But, but what I said, that's correct as well, right? Like if we agree seven, it does, it doesn't, it doesn't bind you to seven months. If in five months, oh, we, 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 we've done it a little earlier, then you, you know, the board can hire.
Look, you're selling my service, essentially. You're selling my service. You can sell it the way you want.
Right.
So if you want to go month to month and for five months, but with a one-month warning that we're coming out, that's, that's what it looks like. Like, it really is like, you're selling my service. That's why it's coming to you. Um, you do it the way that you feel. I think the first thing is, what do you think the monthly fee should be? And then the second, the second step is, okay, well, how long do you, are you comfortable with it? And how much time should we give in terms of a warning if, if, if it doesn't pan out?
That's it.
That it's seven months, for instance, to your point, right? If we give two months notice, that's plenty of notice to find a new manager.
We should give two months. My gosh, you know, we have began, we should give a couple of months.
Who's first? Counselor Dickey.
Uh, as far as talking about the airport board, uh, again, when you were saying it's, uh, the, or council fee, I, I believe we have to, uh, not only give the airport board, but, uh, the interim manager and, uh, a, a timeframe as to what to work around. So he'll know what he has to do within that timeframe or try his best to do within that timeframe. Plus, at the same time, the board knows, okay, we have him till, you know? Um, and the only, the only things, couple of things I've been looking at is suggested motion and, uh, when it comes time and there was gonna be some more, uh, questions and that, but I would like to see that three thousand, uh, per month go up to four thousand per month. And I'd also like to see a stipulation in it saying that any expenses incurred for airport business and that is paid. Cause I, if on the C A O's recommendation, I've only seen mileage. But at the same time, I know in the Halifax, at least once, I don't know who, I believe for the airport business.
The mileage was tracked to the point.
But any meals and all, or anything you go, you have to go, combination, any expenses incurred and that while you're doing business on behalf of them or, you know, I'd like to see that reimbursed to you as well.
Report.
Yeah, so.
Yep.
I guess this is a question to our, our C E O, uh, you know, and assuming it's seven months, which, you know, is ahead and put that in place because I'm sure you have a, a timeframe in your head where you want to work and, uh, I'm assuming, I could be wrong, but at the start, you're gonna probably be, as right now, you're probably working quite a bit while once this starts rolling, uh, maybe the last few months of the seven, let's say, uh, you won't be there as much. Is that accurate, uh?
Yeah, without question.
Yeah. So, you know, so if it goes seven months and, and we jack it up to four thousand, you know, I'll give you that, you may be a few dollars into this, you know?
Cause again, not only, like I said, are they getting an interim manager, I feel as though they're getting a team because they have Hans here, they, you know, I, I, by what I read earlier today, he'll be called upon again to do some work in there.
Yes.
In and around that, you know, so they're getting a pretty good bang for the money.
Are, are the other units sending some of their, uh, workers there to do anything? I guess Alex did the, uh?
No, the answer to your question.
Yeah. So I mean, you know.
Doing it all.
Other than the C A Os or acting C A Os accompanying the board meetings and no different than how we invite counselors to go to those meetings in a non-voting capacity. Uh, that's the extent of, of their participation at this time.
So the counsel Dickey's point, uh, you know, we have staff other than you involved, I mean, maybe the four thousand dollars is a right.
I agree.
I agree.
The three thousand was low for me alone.
Okay.
That's what I'm, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And taking that into account, your motion is not unreasonable at all. But it's, again, I mean, it's what you're comfortable with.
Okay, we're open for a motion. Anybody want, want to make a motion?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Sorry, sorry.
I didn't think it is.
And the only thing that I wanted to add on that motion that's not here, that any expenses incurred for airport business and that be covered.
Okay.
And change to four thousand.
And change to four thousand.
And, and you're saying seven months? Like there's, we didn't, uh, it's not included here in the C.
No, this is a, a motion per month, right?
Yeah.
Nothing to do with.
Yeah, the, the seven month was an estimate on the budget.
That's right.
It's not necessarily a position that I would take that you absolutely have to do seven, but I think in fairness to your partners and the board, you have to include a provision for, for a warning.
If you should give a sixty year.
Sixty days would be appropriate.
Yes, we'd have to give at least six days, you know, at least sixty days, maybe even ninety days. Cause when you go looking for a manager for an airport, like it's, a good manager, you're not gonna find them that easy.
We haven't any problem, we haven't had any problem yet.
That's too much, that's too much.
Like I said, sir, a good manager.
So, question.
Okay, so it's moved, seconded?
Yes.
Moved and seconded. Do you have the mo- you, you, you have the motion the way it should be?
I think so.
Okay. There's no more discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Contradicted? Carried. Okay, we're, number seven for decision. The first one is, uh, relief of taxes and interest requests. And that was an item that was sold, that was a property that was sold. Uh, what's on here? My computer's not giving me what it should here. There we go. Yeah, it was a property that was sold and, uh, we're taking, uh, I guess, bit of a loss on that, but anyway, if you can explain so that they're aware of where that came from.
Sure. So two years ago, council had made an approval. I don't expect you to remember the exact motion, but a couple of years ago, the motion was made that, uh, we would reduce the opening bid on a property that, that had a lot of, uh, uh, costs associated with it. It was a problem account. Uh, last year, the tax sale, we did not sell it. This year, the tax sale, we did. So because we reduced the amount, we had approved, we had approval from you to reduce the amount. But then the bids came in and then the final bid came in and now this is the actual amount remaining on the account. So, um, it's like dead, in dead inventory. We, we managed to revive it and hopefully whoever has purchased it will do something better. But in the meantime, we have, we have to write off this amount because it's absolutely uncollectible. And the second component is that sometimes, uh, properties during the year get changed from taxable to exempt for whatever reason. And so there's a four dollars and seventy-two cents that was outstanding on a property that, that needs to be, uh, written off as well.
Wow.
I know. Um, uh, if we, if, if we use cash, it'll be four seventy. Because of the pending rounding, but, but apparently that doesn't count in accounting. So, so I'm asking that the council relieve the taxes, um, for the property that was sold at tax sale and along with the exemption, the total amount is seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Beat me.
Has it, oh, oh, you have a question?
Second.
Yeah, okay, so if this, uh, the first property we're in trouble, so we sent the amount, uh, seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, okay, so, and it's been bought by somebody?
Correct.
So does the owner have six months to buy it again?
No, because it was six months, no redemption. So the, the deed was transferred instantly to the, to the bidder.
Okay, yeah. Cause I was just thinking if, if we, you know.
That's a great question.
If, you know, if we, you know, and send that and then the first, the original person come back and say, hey, I'm. If we, you know, and send that and then the the first, the original person come back and say, hey, I wanna buy it now, you know, uh but, okay, good.
You get a, you get a gold star for understanding of uh tax sale law. Gold star, gold star.
I seconded counsel's request motion.
It's been moved and seconded, any more discussion? Seeing nine, all in favor?
Aye.
Contraminded, carried. Next one is our fleet and. Let's see, our. You're on the wrong one, somewhere.
Seven B.
Seven B is the award.
Yeah, uh so.
You're on eight. Yeah.
Have a seat, my fine friend.
Very kind, excuse me for a moment.
Uh so in regards to the last meeting in January twenty-ninth, where we had discussed. Potential, we're going out for tender for two staff eagles, one was to replace the Ford Ranger, which is over its lifetime. Not suitable for our services anymore, and to buy a second vehicle for the West Public Treatment uh operator. So we went out for tender, we received uh. Where's it? So it's uh six. Six uh replies. Totaling in ten uh different offers. So based on our evaluation, based on uh purchase price, uh offer for, best offer for the trade-in. And some fuel consumption and warranty, we identified uh the first vehicle. Uh to be, it was, the best offer was from Tasket Ford, uh a brand-new F-one-fifty. It was a double crew cab and at the price of thirty-one thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents. Uh there, based on our procurement policy, we're allowed to apply ten percent discount for local supplier. So they're competing with the trade-in value of five thousand five hundred dollars for the Ranger, competing at twenty-two thousand. Twenty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred fifty-two dollars. And the second one was uh from Bruce Auto Group from Middleton in Nova Scotia. It's a two thousand eighteen Chevrolet Silverado, fifteen hundreds, double crew cap. Uh they offered twenty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars as a straight sale. Offered six thousand, six thousand dollars for the Ford Ranger at trade-in. And they did not receive any discounts for the local supplier, but still very competitive. And so we're asking for the motion to approve. Uh to buy the two thousand eighteen F-one-fifty from Tasket Ford. At the price of thirty-one thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents. And use the trade-in to a better value from Bruce Auto Group in Middleton. And that would bring the price to twenty-three thousand dollars nine hundred twenty-five for that purchase. For both vehicles together, the total fifty-five thousand dollars, three hundred sixteen and fifty cents.
Okay. Can we make a motion and discuss? Okay, that's moved.
Seconded.
Any, any questions on that?
Buying one forty-one G M, is that correct?
Counselor's rep.
Two questions, uh are they bullet four by fours?
Yes.
I thought, so I didn't see.
Yep.
Uh the Chevy Silverado, Murray G M local, in our, in our, did they just?
No, no, they didn't bid at all, uh but I checked with that's uh dealership in Middleton. Were, they can transfer uh the warranty and for oil changes included to the G M uh dealership here in Yarmouth. So we can get everything serviced here in Yarmouth without any trouble and.
Which was my question.
Any other questions?
Question.
Not, there's a motion, all in favor? Contraminded, carried. The next one is the de-watering truck.
Yep.
That's also.
So same was, uh we talked, we went out for tender for a de-watering truck. To uh potentially save significant cost on the capital purchase for. We had initially thought the the centrifuge system for the West Public Treatment Plant. Uh we received six submissions from four different suppliers. Uh during opening, we realized uh one supplier did not include it's a mandatory uh. Uh sheets, well, a form, which is the addendum verification form, it's just, we had posted two addendums with. So we got so many questions, we we issued two changes to the tender. And the supplier did not uh included that uh mandatory form in their submission. And we decided to reject their uh their entries, which was three different options. Uh so we went ahead with the evaluation of three other suppliers. Uh one was called Heatex Solutions from Ontario, uh one was the Abco Industries from Lunenburg. And one entry was called Dry Cake, uh Fender Bacon Enterprises from Belgium. Uh we split the, we had a, made up a, made up. We used one of our evaluation sheets that we also used for the municipal building, just in a different form, uh which was included in the email. So we split into technical and financial uh evaluation. Technical was evaluated by myself, by Von Donchmo and Louis Boudreaux, which are our operators. And the financial was just a simple calculation based on the lowest bidder. And the next highest bidder, percentage-wise, how far he was away from the lowest bidder. That same percentage was deducted off his total points, which was twenty points, so. We had uh for Heatex Solutions, got in total fifty-three points. Uh their total offer included a forty-foot container-based centrifuge system. So it's technically mobile, like it's on the screen if to view, review. Uh everything is mounted in a forty-foot container, unfortunately, there was no wheels, no. Um mobility factor wasn't really considered, I mean, it's mobile if you load it on a flatbed and haul it around to the big truck. And uh and otherwise, it's just focusing on uh the de-watering components in a high quality and quantity. So and price-wise, they were three hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars with their offer. Plus H S T and additional cost for training, uh additional, we would have had to spend more time on finding suitable vehicles to move it arounds. And so that's why they were only received fifty-three total points. And then we had Abco Industries with the de-watering truck, which we had already discussed in January twenty-ninth during the last meeting. Uh there, it's a truck-mounted uh spiral de-watering system, everything is mounted on the truck. It is easy to maneuver, you need a class-three license and a pumping license, which is a day training, so it's it's. It's fairly simple to uh to get these licenses and to operate this truck. Uh I think it's for, and their offering price was three hundred seventy thousand dollars flat. And based on our evaluation, they received ninety-eight points in total. And then the third option, what we, which we received was uh from Belgium, the Dry Cake Enterprises. And it was a sa, similar to the first, it's a trailer-mounted or container-mounted centrifuge system. Uh all parts are made in Italy, uh manufactured in Europe, and needs to be imported, so all import costs. Are covered by the uh supplier. It's just in addition, what we had to come up with is a vehicle that can pull the trailer and move it around. So the system actually can de-water sludge from onsite sewers and uh the sewer plants, so. It was a pretty good offer, in our opinion. Um still no training involved, or training was an additional cost uh to fly in the engineers from Belgium. And to find a suitable vehicle, where to go for another tender, to find a pump truck to fulfill the full requirements outside of the tender. So and they were priced at four hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Uh and received sixty-two total points based on our evaluation. So our recommendation or what we would like to ask counsel to. Uh yeah, to approve the purchase of the de-watering truck from Abco Industries. Due to the lowest price, uh training, everything's included in that price, so it's the best value for money and it's. It's a local supplier, so we look, we're suppo, we're supporting our own neighbor, our own economy and. Think it's a very sustainable solution.
Moved.
Any questions?
The uh the the vehicle that we're from Abco, was it uh a second-hand or demonstrator or what was it?
Uh yeah. It was a, a two-year-old vehicle built for, uh it was a private entity, but the private entity dissolved. Just before they took the the truck in operation, so it's mainly a demonstration truck.
And did we figure out what they had for a warranty?
Uh it was uh two years on the, on the truck. Four years since, I think, a hundred sixty thousand uh on the powertrain, and there was additional warranties on. On the idling, on the, on the engine, just for idling and operating the pumps. So it was an extensive two- to four-year warranty package and the one-year warranty on the de-watering components.
Okay, so one year of de-watering.
So.
Uh the question was brought up, made that uh this truck could not be, could not in the wintertime, it would freeze up. Have you, I'm sure you've looked at that, any, any truth to that, this is again, you're somebody, that those pumping and that, that can be, you're in trouble. If you're in trucks in the freeze, valves and all kinds of stuff, you'll have to put it in the building.
Uh yeah, storage should be uh in uh somewhere inside over the winter months, it is, you can operate it in the winter month. At a, to a, to an extent, I think if it gets too cold, a long usage, it's not recommended, but. I think we can schedule around really cold temperatures to de-water and use it, so I don't see a, a problem with.
Do we have a building where we can put it in?
Uh nothing definite yet, but we're working on several solutions.
So just so I understand, so if we're getting on a truck and does that mean we have to buy a building, is that? Do we have to put a building up to put it in in the wintertime, that's gonna cost us another hundred thousand, I guess, did you take that in effect? With the price this or?
Yes, uh it's, we have the option, either way, we uh ask local fire stations if they can. Park the truck for a fee for the winter month, or we invest into a building. I don't think it's gonna be a hundred thousand for a building like that, but the shelter is needed. But we're looking at a few options right now to.
Okay, we're looking at a price here, then the question, gonna cost us some amount of money, but you're looking at a fire station, do you that, which makes a lot of sense.
Potentially the airport would be, I think, the second option.
Thank you.
So we do have uh excess space at the West Public Treatment Plant, they would have to be modified. To accept that at this time, is that the appropriate assessment of that? There is an access point there, but it would have to be.
There is an access point and can be modified, or the building might, needs to be extended slightly to the front. The pad is already there, so we just have to put up walls and a roof potentially, so I don't see the cost that extensive. And it can be phased over several years or.
Got it.
The only option, uh the only thing that we came across recently was, I think, the disposal. Part of the product of that truck might not be as easy as we we thought. It wasn't even uh mentioned by the engineers when they looked at the centrifuge system, this is the same, there's a, some environmental regulations. That might get, might make it a little difficult, but uh I think we have the four different options that we could follow up on. To dispose the the sludge coming out of the truck at, at low cost, it doesn't, it's not. Still makes it more feasible than the G two packs or any other solution if we had looked at.
Any other question or comments? Seeing nine, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contraminded, carried.
Thanks, Hans. Can I have a seat back?
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Domtex, payment in excess of budget.
Uh some of you have seen this uh through the Industrial Commission meeting of yesterday, uh we had a conversation about the Dominion Textiles demolition. Uh we're, we're not a hundred percent sure where, um well, I think, I shouldn't say a hundred percent sure, I say, I think. The, the the manager is 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 very much aware of the project and the project costs, there's a couple of. Variables here that are happening, one is, one is the, that uh the um waste park. Our Waste Authority will be transferring money to the Industrial Commission to reimburse the monies that they paid for. Um tipping fees, which we've had a conversation about before, and uh the other item is H S T. Uh it's a big project, H S T gets collected, uh doesn't get collected imme- immediately, and Revenue Canada likes to audit things when they're different, so. There's a little bit of a delay uh associated with that, so. Um I guess what I'm asked, what I'm uh requesting of budget to, uh of counsel to approve is, we had budgeted an amount of nine hundred and fifty thousand, which. Quite frankly, I knew would be a little low, because we figured it would be at least, at least a million. Um right now, the cost that we've been billed is, or that we're billed and are expected to pay. Is a total of one point one one nine million, uh so the difference being one sixty-nine, four one six, hundred sixty-nine grand. Uh I don't have authority to actually issue that check because it's in excess of the budget. Um and so I'm, I'm asking that counsel approve the excess amount and and the funds would come from the operating reserve. To to fund the budget overall, so it would not come out of the current year surplus, uh it would come out of prior year uh surpluses. So entertain any questions of clarification around that, I know three of you are already aware of it, but not all of you are, so.
No questions?
And I will, just one other thing is, is that the, the last number may not be that number, it may be less, but I can't confirm that at this time. Uh part of this is due to cash flow, we may uh receive either a reduction in our costs in the Industrial Commission in the future year. Or receive a refund for excess funds transferred to the Industrial Commission. That is a possibility, although I don't, at this time, I can't confirm that that's the case, but in order for it to leave the organization, I require your approval.
I'd like to move that the C E O be authorized to pay a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars grant to the Industrial Commission. Which is, is in excess of the budget, and that fund be taken from the operating reserve.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contraminded, carried. We're on other business, fire inspector services. As you know, since uh we lost Glenn. We've been, we've, we've been without a fire inspector, and we've been getting the services from Barrington. So. If you want, there, there's a, there's a regulations now that we have to adhere to, so that we have to get a report on what we're gonna be doing. And that's, I think that's due in April. But this one here, do we need, we don't need any, any uh motion, or we don't need any decision on this, it's mostly for information at this point.
You should just be aware that A, we're mandated, like by, by mandate, we're required to offer fire inspection services for our municipality. We have uh since Glenn's departure, asked the department, the municipality and district of Barrington. And I believe there's a motion in the past that authorizes uh their fire inspector to do inspections on our, for us on our behalf. Technically, uh that's okay in accordance with the act. We think that once we start getting into a more scheduled fire inspection, that we will require additional resources, so this is kind of a warning. So this is kind of a warning, that, um, if Barrington cannot provide a hundred percent of our services through shared service, that we may have to look, uh, at a, a local or, or shared solution for that. So your budget coming, your budget discussions coming up will include an amount for fire inspection services. And it's, it's mandated. So however we do it, and what the cost is, is still uncertain. Uh, but we're in the process of developing a, a schedule, or, or updating the schedule, so that we can, uh, understand, uh, what's required.
So in the, in the case where Barrington, let's say cannot, cannot provide the, the, the amount of service that we need, where do we go from there? We'd, we'd have to hire somebody.
Yeah, we would ask another municipality to see if they had a fire inspector that could provide that service, which is possible. Or we engage in a part-time person in the municipality, get them trained to do the actual fire inspection service. I think there's a lot of volunteer firemen that might express an interest in that area to, to further their, um, their, their, um, their work in that area, it'd be a paid position, so. Um, there are people that are potentially interested, uh, in that, I don't know of any in particular, but I know there's a lot of very dedicated volunteers that would have that interest. So, um, yeah, and in absence of that, I guess Barrington, it's, it's a good chance that Barrington will always be engaged in this, because the person coming in new would require a mentor. And the Barrington fire inspector is a very, very good, very good, uh, well, you know, many years of experience. And, and the CEO for Barrington has expressed an interest to, to share that expertise with a new person, if that's the choice that we have. So, um, it would be part-time, and, and it may not necessarily be an employee, it could be subcontractive.
Any questions? Next one is the Municipal Giverga, Financial Conditions Indicator. I could explain to you, but I think I'll confuse you.
So the good news is, is that this is a very, very good, uh, index. Out of thirteen possible, uh, rankings, twelve, uh, and, and red being warning, yeah, uh, red being, you know, you're below, uh, your rural average and a threshold built by the province. Yellow meaning that you are, uh, you meet one, but not both. And green saying that you're higher than, than both the average and the threshold. Out of thirteen, um, uh, rankings or designations, twelve of which are green, one of which is yellow. And the yellow is the number of budgets that are not within the plus or minus five percent. Um, we have managed to, in at least three out of five years, uh, saved more than five percent of what we said that we would on the budget. Uh, they penalize us for that with a little color. Uh, I would argue that, but that's okay, that's just me. So, uh, green twelve, yellow one, and that's the best yellow you can have. That's a very, very, uh, strong outlook for, for the municipality. Things can change, but it's, uh, it's a very solid result. It's not, this is not online yet, and will be very soon.
Question?
Thank you.
Only thing I'd like to say there is, I see this was updated Tuesday, February thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. Um, we went on a course in Halifax, Councilor Sarette, myself, last year, as far as to do with some of this stuff, as far as financial condition indicators and that. And they, uh, the people putting on this course actually commented on our dial at that time. And that of the condition that the Argyle municipality was in. And said that it was pretty envious of a lot of other municipalities, I think. So I would say as a team, these are doing great.
Yes.
For sure. So.
Any questions, any comments? Is that all?
That's it, just, it's for your information.
Okay.
Once it gets online, you'll be able to compare it with other municipalities.
Yes.
And that, I think, is more important information, to see where you're at.
We're looking at.
Hard to compare when you're just looking at one, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
The next one is the provincial ban on single-use plastic bags. Now, I think that was brought up through the Waste Check, and that was, that was something that you had put on, on our last. So do you wanna take that, or?
Well, I, I can speak towards it, it's not, that letter that came, like, came after I spoke, yes. But, uh, certainly, I, I would like to read in the letter, and they're looking for an answer, uh, uh, according to this letter, the province would like to know how the municipalities feel about banning the, uh, banning the plastic bags. And, uh, you know, if they could, Region Seven, which is ourselves, Digby, Clare, it's probably Digby, Yarmouth, it's probably Yarmouth, uh, if it could make a decision, so, uh, let's see. March the ninth, so Chairman Anthony can bring it to the regional chairs. I find that's a, quite a stringent, uh, maybe too quick for council. Uh, certainly, I'd like to get a, if, my idea was giving a presentation from Waste Check, uh, Amy certainly had a nice presentation we saw at Waste Check, and I think this council would be beneficial before we make a decision, honestly, yeah.
Okay.
To jump onto this, uh, you know, I, I think we certainly would wanna see that, the presentation.
Your next scheduled council meeting is the thirteenth of March.
And they want this by the ninth?
I would certainly suggest you wait till their presentation. Some of the questions that were brought up at Waste Check, what about the stores like the small cart store, or the service stations that have little bags, that's all they've got to give when somebody comes for a bunch of candy or whatever you order, so what do they do? There's no answer there. Here it's, Amy, they want you to, to decide now to ban on plastic bags, whether it's from Ridman's, Carl's, Superstore, I think there's more to it than that, and I think the presentation would help us a lot to think about it before we just jump into it. They'll have to wait for us, that's all. That's my suggestion, you know? I would like also to either ask the, uh, Perk, I think that's the name we go by, okay? If he could get a hold of Amy, or I could ask Amy to, Waste Check, to get a hold of you, to, to try to get a presentation.
Yeah, we've, we've reached out to Waste Check, we're just trying to confirm a date. As far as, we only have one presentation per meeting, and we already have presentations booked up until April, but getting the sense of, of the group and, and the requirement for the decision on a timely basis, we might, I might try to add it at our next council meeting, if it works with Kenny.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. So is council, uh, now, is council okay with, with this? We don't need a motion or anything for this, this is, no, because.
Let's wait, they can wait for us?
No.
It is, uh, a quick, you know, a short time to, to, to make a decision on that. Okay, we're all okay with that, we move on to correspondence and for information. We have Waste Check, January, January eighteenth, uh, financials, Waste Check Board Meeting. Revision of municipal, municipality of Argyle with the MPS and LGB. Beafundec Sea Kayak Symposium, twenty seventeen, final, final report. Financial information, return and statement of estimates. Five-year building permit comparisons, Mariner Center Annual Report, and the RIN CEO Report of February thirteenth, twenty eighteen. Are there any of these that anybody wants to, Councilor Donchmo?
I just wanted to comment on the Ninety Bay of Fundec Sea Kayak Symposium, since I am on, on their board, and, uh, just wanted to thank council again for financial support. Uh, again, this year is a successful event, over seventy pad bros from mostly across Canada, some from the US, coaches from Europe and all over. Um, and the weather this year was unreal, it was almost too nice for feet for those guys. Those guys liked, you know, pretty rough, rugged stuff, but, but it was slick calm and, and beautiful and sunny and, and warm. Uh, but anyway, a heap of things, heap to enjoy it. I, uh, I was invited, I think, to the council of U.S., you made it to the Saturday night, right?
Yes, did.
And the next one is, they have it every two years now, the next one is, uh, two thousand nineteen, September thirteenth, fifteenth, so.
Okay. Any other, I haven't, any other correspondence? Councilor Biggs?
Just wondering if I could, again, I'm, I'm, I don't know. Can I ask a question about Waste Check, or the way it works, or is this the right time to do it, or? I've just been, uh, questioned by some residents, uh, down in my area. They, each week, I believe it is, a resident with a civic number can bring so much, um, garbage or material into the dump with no fee. Sometimes, some people never bring anything into the dump during the year. Uh, but I know some of them have asked me, like, once a year sometimes, or once every few years, or whatever, they may be doing a roofing job with a lot of old asphalt shingles. Now, they can't take in, I don't know if it's two hundred kilograms a week, or whatever they're allowed. Is there any way, uh, true civic numbers, and that if a person would be able to bring, like, uh, once a year, I don't know, fifteen hundred kilograms, or whatever the case may be, that would eliminate some of this stuff going down back roads, or open pits being burnt, or anything like that? And I'm only asking the question that was asked to me, and I don't know the answer. I don't know if it's something that's doable, or not doable, or.
The, uh, the, the, the policy of the two hundred per week is not a Waste Check policy, it's actually an Argyle policy. And not all of the regions have the same policy, some you actually have to pay every time. The, the, the policy or the bylaw states simply that if, if they wanna do that within a certain amount, that we will actually pay for it, the municipality, not them. And the logic, of course, is to your point, we don't want it in the woods, we don't wanna have to clean it and then pay for it when we bring it. So, um, if, if council is interested in extending or doing certain application, application for certain one-off projects, it's certainly something that you have every right to bring to this table, that we could bring that policy or bylaw to your attention. So, you know, in a response to that, I will send a copy of the, of the, uh, of the regulations to all council, and if you wish to think about what that means for you and bring it up at a future meeting for change, um, that's absolutely, uh, one hundred percent in your power to do so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the answer.
Anything else? Well, we'll continue to write in ten, which is financial requests. We have two, the first one is Publico Area Alliance Club, that would be, Councilor Ward.
Uh, I'd like to give five hundred dollars to the Publico Area Alliance Club for their annual cooking demonstration.
Um, sorry, second, sir.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contradicted, carried. Saint Peter's Parish Cemetery, there isn't any attachment, but that's yours.
Sorry about that, that was brought in just this evening. And, uh, yes, uh, the Saint Peter's Parish Cemetery has asked me for a five hundred dollar grant to help do some repairs in the cemetery. So I'm moving. Thank you.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Contradicted, carried. Next agenda topics for next meeting, or notice of motion, does anybody have any? None, question period, any questions, Dan? No questions, then, we have an in-camera, a couple of in-camera, uh, sessions, not session, but a couple of topics are in camera. So any motion going to camera?
You have to go into camera.
Second, we can't, so.
So, did you want to speak?